We think you'll like us. Equal Housing Legal, member FDIC.
Well, if there is a call on the presence, we'll go ahead and proceed with the meeting. Welcome everyone out to our reading for January meeting. The first thing I want to ask for is a motion approved in January.
Make a motion approved.
All right, a motion second approved in January, a little discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we know that is approved. First thing on our agenda is the consent agenda.
Make a motion approved, second.
All right, a motion second approved, consent agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we know that is approved. Next thing is delegation. When we get the delegation.
Right, we have the delegation.
Okay. All right, then we're going to move along. We're going to do some celebrations on some things that we've got going on. Troy, I'm going to let you start with that.
Well, we have an opportunity. We learned this past semester that we have two of our campuses who are involved in the summer read to be ready program. Again, if you have followed Tennessee education, then there has been a very concerted effort to improve the percentage of students reading at grade level. Third grade, early literacy has been the focus. Currently, right now, that our state is well below, or 50%, well below 50% as a state average of those reading at grade level. And the effort is by the year 2025, is that right? That it will be that we will have our students 75% reading at grade level. Again, you think, well, why target third grade? Because the research has shown that third grade, if you have those children reading at grade level, then their ability to be able to continue through their educational school years and have success will lead them to better chances for careers in the future, more assured of them completing their high school education and pursuing something post-secondary. And, you know, our efforts is to always ensure that all students are at high levels. And I would say that we're very proud of the work that has happened at all of our campuses, but especially for today, we've got Ms. Kim Scott with Eastchester and Ms. Amy Woolley with, excuse me, may I correct myself, Dr. Kim Scott. She's paid for it, right, Wayne? So she needs to start wearing that title more. Dr. Wayne Scott at Eastchester and Ms. Amy Woolley. And Dr. Wayne, well, he is a doctor, I'm sorry. Dr. Kim Scott at Eastchester, excuse me, and Ms. Amy Woolley at West. And they're going to come up and talk about their efforts for this summer's, summer to read to be ready program.
Okay, we did, hopefully so the children didn't feel like they were in summer school, we did a summer reading camp because it was not supposed to be a remedial program. So when we went to the training, which was phenomenal, and we've heard that this year's training is going to be just as good. The learning target for us was to develop their love for reading, and that's what we did. And it was very fun to be able to concentrate on that. Thought you might wonder how we decide who comes. We will use our already scores from the spring, and the children who score high basic or low proficient will be the ones who get the priority, which means kids are coming who are able to learn in a normal way, present the material. Like I said, it's not remediation. It is high basic and low proficient. We sent out invitations last year, and we'll do that again this year, and establish a waiting list. I probably invited about 100 to the camp before I got the 50 because of the feeling of it being summer school. I don't want my kid to go to summer school. And that was fine, but this year I've already had calls of folks wanting to come.
And she still had 50 in hers. I'm approved for 25 at Westchester. I was approved for $24,500 to stand at Westchester for the summer program. It's very exciting. I actually requested 30 students, and then when the budget came back, they approved 25. And we'll have five teachers involved in that. And to tell you how successful it was at her place last year, I had two of my teachers that participated as teachers at the camp last year. And so I put out the email saying, hey, guys, we got approved for the Read to Be Ready camp. I need five teachers. I had nine wanting. So that shows you that how exciting it is and that teachers want to do it. In fact, the two that did it said it was the most fun they've had teaching in a long time because it was so relaxed, and that has spilled over into our school year this year. They were able to use ideas and keep the excitement going. That's a big deal. So we're really excited about that.
Once we get our invitation sent out and accepted, we'll send out an interest inventory because we planned our camp around the things that children enjoy. And we're able to give them books, so we needed to know what books they liked to read. So by the numbers, last year, we had $45,000 for just the one camp at Eastchester. And my budget is, again, about $45,000. But I have 50 slots per camp, and Amy has 25. Now, last year, we invited students all over the county, and we did have a few students from Westchester that came to Eastchester for camp. And so we're hoping we'll have a lot more interest from the kids for Westchester since they have their own camp. We gave away 1,750 books, good books. The kids were very excited, and I loved giving the books. They got a book every day that they came. We served breakfast and lunch every day. That was 240 meals that we served. I had 50 slots, but if somebody told me they were going on vacation and going to be gone for a week, I called kids. I wanted as many kids taking advantage of this. So we ended up serving 60 kids in all.
Well, the good thing is, we are removing a lot of the obstacles about summer, giving kids the summer programs. Transportation's provided, the meals are provided. So things that would kind of hold you back in normal situations, they're like, you know, the parents are like, yeah, we'll get them there, or, you know, we'll let them come. And then we did really well about advertising too this summer and putting on pictures out there to keep excitement. They saw pictures from Discovery Learning Center, I don't know what it's called. Yeah, Discovery Park.
Discovery Park.
And things like that, that they got to do all those things. And the excitement's already there. I've already had people asking me about if we're going to be able to do it at our campus this summer, so.
The grant is set up to have 20 days of camp, and we could have had four weeks, but we do five weeks. We found that having anything in the summer on Friday, our attendance went way down. So we started the last week in May. That week, we did go Tuesday through Friday because of Memorial Day, but the rest of camp is Monday through Thursday, and our attendance was excellent. If they didn't come, I called and kind of told folks, you know, I've got a waiting list if your child's not going to participate. And we had some to drop out, but not many, and all I had to do was call, and we filled it pretty quick. I had 12 teachers, like Amy said, two from West came, and I had 10, well, one from the junior high, and then the rest of us were Eastchester teachers.
And we only have five kids per teacher, so it's a really small group.
Yes. Last year, we went on 11 trips. Now, I'm counting going to the library because they did get on the school bus, and some of them were very excited to do that. Ms. Nancy Canada was wonderful, let us participate in the summer reading program at the library. And so we went every week to the library. One week, we went two times. I'll show some pictures of some of our other trips that we went on. You have to turn in a schedule to the state, and it has to be approved. My first schedule was not approved. I just couldn't understand why it wasn't approved. But anyway, this one was approved. I went to the briefing session about the camp and the things that we weren't sure about, where they really want families involved and riding, and we've heard that that's what our training's going to be this year. So it seems like they listened to what we needed. Families are supposed to be able to come into camp, and we're supposed to be kind of modeling what they can do at home. I invited, but unless those folks get on the school bus with their kids, they're not going to come usually. I invited them to come to the library. I didn't invite them on the field trips that we had to pay for, but I think that's really what they want us to do. And we in fact, we only paid for two, is that right? Two, our last field trip and Up and Jumping? So like Amy said, each teacher can only have five students. And every day, the teachers, they were great, to spend time listening to the kids read, reading to the kids, showing the kids that they like to read. We set up the gym. We had, I call it Eagle River, we made and had a campsite and had sleeping bags and campfires and all, and they got to go in there. We pretended those laundry baskets were boats, so they went around. But they loved reading. We had books out all the time that they could pick and read, and then they of course got to take a book home every day. Amy will love that, she'll love doing that. Then in each classroom, they set up their own campsite. So we had tents all over the building. This day, they were scientists, they've got their aprons and goggles. Another great thing about it is, in the morning, we did our literature and book kinds of things, and then the, well, it wasn't the afternoon, but the second session, we were back in our rooms, they got to do experiments, all kinds of stuff that the kids really, really loved. The teachers did too. They were very excited. Every day, they got to read, they had to write, and then talked to each other about their thinking, lots of talking that in normal school, we're sometimes going, shh. There's some of the stuff that they were doing. We ended up having to have two book tables because we did have varying levels, and I didn't want kids to get too easy of a book or too hard of a book. If they insisted that they wanted a certain book, we let them have it because that's what the program was about, but. There's Nancy reading to our group. So we planned for five units, but we only ended up getting to do four because of our trips. We really weren't sure how that was going to work, and it worked wonderfully, much better than we ever thought. We started out with seeds and plants, and since we went to school on Friday, that first week, we got to go to the farmer's market. And I'm not sure how we all expected that to go, but it could not have gone better. The vendors were wonderful. They were giving stuff to the kids. They showed them how they grew different things. They got some honey. I believe any of them liked it. They were all over that, they, it was just, that was the first thing we did, and we saw that we could actually take them somewhere and they would do right. So we finished the unit going out to Falcon Ridge. They did the seeds unit with us. We had a good time on that, except when we got there, I had forgotten the check, and we couldn't pay them that day, but we got them their money. It's force in motion, kind of difficult, but they loved it. We used the scooters at school, did tug of war, all kinds of different experiments, books about force in motion. And then we went out to Up and Jumping, and Nathan set up for us the big trigs, the slide, all kinds of stuff that they could use, what we had learned out there at his place. Then we did Taking Care of Our World, and this was so cool. We did tons of stuff about recycling, went out to the recycling center, went to the water treatment plant. All of these folks were so nice and excited to help our kids, and the kids loved it. That day, we were also supposed to get a visit from the power department, but it came a storm, and they wouldn't climb the pole and the light. Anyway, one of the things, I didn't have a picture of them, but at the treatment plant, there were red and blue pipes, and the kids were noticing that hot water is in the red pipe and cold water in the blue pipe. And we were just kind of like, okay, they're really thin. I mean, you know, they just usually kind of listen, but one of the kids noticed that. Amber Green was wonderful. She gave us lots of stuff that we could show the kids. And the recycling has even carried over into this year. We're recycling at school, going to try to form a recycling club because the kids really got on board with the recycling. And then we decided, because we had enough money left, to go on a big trip. At the end, the kids have been so good, and we were talking about different inventors and inventions. So on the last day of camp, we took the kids to Discovery Park. And it, I had never been, but it was just a wonderful day and a wonderful way to end our camp, and we just had a good time. So now we get to have two camps. We both have them. That's the total amount, and we'll get to help our kids hopefully love to read. We have seen, well, and I've got each one of the teachers to write down something so you could read it, but we have seen a difference in the kids that attended camp. Their scores and their attitude towards reading has just been really good so far this school year. So, any questions?
Any kids from Jacks Creek invited them?
We invited kids from Jacks Creek last year too, and they, the bus was going to go get them and everything, so. We can do that again. I'm hoping, since we have two sites, they won't have to ride on the bus as long this year because the kids came from Westchester, had a very long trip, but.
All right, thank y'all pretty much, and we do appreciate what y'all are teaching to every day in this camp. All right, Troy, we want to bring up the platform and celebrate.
Sure. Well, the other, just to raise awareness of everybody here, and it was just a research that I was doing, just to determine some successful districts in other states. I was looking at a website called the NISH K-12 website, which it ranks districts, school districts, in states. And anyway, I was looking at Massachusetts, which I was doing some research in that, for that state, and their school district. I said, well, let me see what Tennessee has to say because it ranks the top 25. It is a, an organization that has some relation to real estate, but it does look at test scores, it looks at the community involvement, community support. It does look attendance, it looks at different things, and it categorizes them based on some algorithm, some formula that was not included, so I can't tell you the breakdown. But when I pulled up the district side or the Tennessee side, and I started looking through the site, Chester County Schools was ranked number 15 in the state as far as the best school districts in the state. The ones ahead of us are school districts that, that we have known for years that have always been very affluent, and those that we would seek out, such as Oak Ridge School District, Williamson County, Marable City, Alcoa City, Germantown, Clarksville, Wilson County, Cogable. Chester County was just below Hamlin County, that's in Morristown, Tennessee. And we were just above Knox County, where Knox was located. So here's one place where we meet the bombs one more time. Right, Wayne? That's okay if you insist. But I, again, this is not anything that just because of our service, this is the, not only the work that our educators do, our staff does each and every day with our kids, it's the community involvement, it's the community support that you offer. You guys give us the freedom to take risks, like this summer reading program, to take those challenging situations and make it work because we know that you got our back. So we do appreciate that as a school district, but I just wanted to, again, celebrate with our school teachers, our staff, our support staff, to let you know that in the state, I've said this many times, Chester County Schools are known in the state. And it's not because of anybody just talking about it, it's the work that's being done. So I appreciate that.
Is that looking at numbers, the number of schools in the system?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, the next thing to have is, we're going to do a drawing to show some appreciation for our summer staff that heads these days, and this is a drawing for each secretary.
That's correct. Again, if you recall, a few months back, we looked at different incentives to encourage our staff to be present. We are really emphasizing the need for our students to be present every day. I know because of experience and conversation I've had with principals, and I look at Kim and Amy, of their attention that they give almost on a daily basis, letting their kids know, letting their staff know how important it is to be at school every day. It is a critical thing because our teachers, our employees, both staff certified and classified, they can't offer the best services for our educating our students if the students are not there. So to echo that and to show that we model what we preach, I also wanted to incentivize this opportunity for our staff. So each month, it's a pilot program, we're going to start, this one being the first one, but we're looking back one month, and we're going to have six drawings looking back at December, and it's going to carry through the month of May. And every name of a certified and classified teacher or classified staff who have not had any sick days or personal days taken during that month will be included in the drawing. For certified staff, we're going to have a drawing for three names. Each one will receive a $200 gift card or a gift, monetary gift.
Added to their check.
Okay, it's added to their actual check. Okay, good. I'll shake your hand when you get it. Our classified staff, our classified staff, there are going to be two drawn. Now, just for your knowledge, for the month of December, of the certified staff, we had 143 staff members who took no sick days nor personal days, so I'm very proud of that number. And then, of course, January's been rocked with flu, so we don't know where that'll be. We haven't run any numbers yet, and we'll look at that next month. What I've provided here is a custom random number generator. It's all going to be done legitimate in the sign for everybody. Bob is going to be Bana. He's going to call out the name of the recipient. Each of you who are included in the list have a number assigned to your name. All the board members have the same list. So Bob, when I call out the number, Bob will quote the name, and that will be the one recipient. We're going to do it three times over for the certified, and then two times over for the classified. Okay? Are you ready, Bana?
That's good.
Okay. So the first one, no drum roll. Number six.
Okay. You want to get Barker?
Oh, Lauren.
Lauren Barker. Okay, you're ready for the next one?
Number two.
66.
I think that's how it goes.
Number two.
Six, two, six.
Michael Hodam.
That was Michael Hodam. Okay, and then the third one?
Seventy-two.
Seeya Hunt.
Okay. So those are the three. Again, let's give those names again.
Okay, Seeya Barker.
Lauren Barker, Michael Hodam, and Seeya Hunt are our three recipients for this month. Again, these names will be back included if they are without sick days or personal days, they'll be included again. So there is not like one time win and you're done. Continue to encourage our staff to take no days off. For our classified staff, we had 71 individuals who were, we had 71 individuals who had no sick days or personal days taken during the month of December. Okay, you ready?
Yes, sir.
Fourteen.
Fourteen is Katrina Cook.
Okay. And one more? Thirty-five.
Christina Hollman.
Christina Hollman. Hollman, yeah. Christina Hollman. All right, so those are the winners for this month. We'll do a drawing next month. It'll go about the same routine. But again, thank you for those who were included in the list because, yes, the money is nice, but more importantly, the fact that you are working with those kids on a daily basis, that makes all the difference in the world. So we appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. The next thing on our agenda is looking at the Policy Finance Committee. We did have one policy that you were going to.
The policy, the policy, there was a discrepancy between what our first page of Policy Section Two or Policy Number 2.403. There was a discrepancy between what it said was the issue date on the initial page as compared to what it was, as you see reflected on the first page, where it says the issue date was 9/17/98. Because of that discrepancy, I asked the TSBA to provide us a copy of the new draft to represent that same policy. You see that it's more lengthy. My recommendation is that we substitute the personal property sales for 2.403 that was in there previous or currently in there for the current draft that the TSBA provided.
Make a motion approved, I say.
Make a motion second. Any other discussion? All in favor of approval of the new policies, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next thing on the group, yeah, I talked to Troy just for a few minutes about this event, about the adoption of the TSBA resolutions. Troy, you did say you regretted the adoption.
Yes, sir. TSBA sent this out to us after the legislation, or the legislator started, the general legislator. These are policies, well, first, the first page is position statements from the TSBA, and then the resolutions, if I'm using the right terminology, is that what they call it, resolutions? These are, yeah, resolutions. These are resolutions that Ben Torres with TSBA offered for us to consider, and again, it needs to be for board approval. What we will do is just substitute the blank for Chester County School Board, and we will submit these, if you approve these, to our state legislators, Steve McDaniel and Dolores Gresham.
Make a motion.
Yes, sir. Make a motion second. We do approve these position statements. Any other discussion?
Troy, how read them? Do you have any?
I have no opposition with any of them. The, of course, again, the number, I haven't talked to other directors about whether or not their board is approving these same resolutions, but I would say this, the legislators are looking, and they will be conscientious. Steve McDaniel will listen to what we suggest, what we offer. So the more districts that participate with this, the better chance we can get these things working in our favor. And I'm saying in our favor, not just to make our life easier, but I believe it's better for our students.
Any other discussion? All right, hold the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The next thing on our agenda is going back, looking at. Next thing on our agenda is going back, looking at our construction bids for a constructed high school, and the last meeting, we decided to have Troy looking at that a little bit further, about the other winners. Okay, Troy, if you did some work on that?
Yes, sir. Included in your board package, again, the focus, the attention, since we did stay in decision until this week, or this month's meeting, my focus was talking to other directors of schools, former directors of schools, to determine the quality of work. We have the numbers in front of us, but the question was, what's the quality of work, since we've never done any business, for school business, with Barker or with Watlington Brothers? We had experience with ENT, so I felt comfortable that we were all comfortable with their quality of work. In my conversations with Buddy, Buddy White, former director of schools for Madison County, he had done some work with Watlington Brothers for this, while he was sitting as the director of schools. And then I also talked to Steve Wilkinson at Henderson County, and he had done work with Barker. They had done multiple renovations of their existing sites, and Barker did the work. In both cases, talking to Buddy and talking to Steve, both of them had no questions, no doubts about the quality of work, they were satisfied with the work, and they felt like, well, they both said that if I had to do over, we would use them again. So, there was no distinction, again, going back to what Jeb Don had shared earlier, that he felt like the three that were the closest in this bidding process provided about the same quality of work. So, there was no distinction that I found, talking to Steve Wilkinson and talking to Buddy White regarding the quality of work of Barker or Watlington Brothers.
Okay, well, if we look at TS, and one of our policy, which says to accept the lowest and best bid, I would entertain a motion if we do go to the lowest bid, which would be Barker.
I make a motion that we go with Barker.
I'm second. I would have a motion, second, that we go to the lowest bid, which would be Barker. Any discussion?
Are we going to go with the lowest bid on everything we do, like on buses in the future? Which we hadn't been doing that in the past. We've been buying Bluebirds, which is more expensive than Thomas.
The last I know, we've been using-
The college has not put in any bids for us, and we called.
I, I don't, I don't know, I don't know, that's why I was looking toward red, talking to-
They were invited, they didn't call them, they didn't put a bid in. The only thing I'm going to raise is from the state law, which says to accept the lowest and best.
You know, it's at our policy or state?
It's, it's a state law, and it is our policy too. Our, our policy, the TSBA updates, it's according to state laws. It's according to law, I could be looking up here. There's our policy.
Yeah, I've, I've seen our policy.
Okay. It looks like Tennessee Code Edited 49-2203 goes down, talking about a warning, it said, shall we ever contract with the lowest and best bidder?
How do you determine the best and the lowest? I mean, other than price?
Well, we just do an equal work. That's what, and we discussed before, what I'd said, if one of the companies had had a lot of lawsuits, or a lot of problems, didn't do their work, didn't come in on time, and then I would say, okay, that wouldn't necessarily be the best, but going, but without any problems with any of them, and I do remember asking the architect if it was any, if he had any problems in the plans, and he said, no, that they all were good contractors, so that's what I'm going by.
Don't think when you get into the field dirt and field rock, that's going to change the lowest bid.
That's shot for better. And, and also, I do, you didn't have to just talk no more about that.
Well, we know what Jeb said was going to have to do.
I think the lowest bid is, well, and, and something else is to look, that I talked to Troy there till ago, there's some questions, the fire marshal looking at the plans, you know, a different fire marshal, and he's saying, we may not have to have as many exits, and may not have to have all of these walks around. Okay, yeah, that's what I'm saying, but, but that was the last thing, that Troy, the fire marshal that has come in now-
Oh, we got another new one?
Yes.
The, the fire marshal that I talked to was Steve Darrow. He had previously been the fire marshal that inspected our schools, but he had been reassigned to other counties, but they are reassigned him back to include Chester because of some shifting around of positions. When he asked to see our plans, he had raised some questions about if we have it sprinkled, which that's what the plan calls for, he says, he does not believe that it requires second egress out for those classrooms. Now, I did call-
Well, the dial-up didn't do it at that new school they built.
I did call Jeb Don back, and Jeb said, I agree, he did provide me the person, and I've got the phone number for the one who did make that call, saying that, and I can't remember the guy's name off the top of my head, but it's the person who gave that new code, and gave the requirements for the, not only for the exit doors, but the drive, the walk-around. Because that's the issue, because it has to be ADA compliance, has to be the right length. Derek, I don't know where it's going to go, I, I have left a message for Steve on, or Steve Barrow to call me back, Steve Darrow to call me back. But if we can negotiate that back out, if we have our fire marshal saying that it's not needed, then that will, that could return numbers back to what we started with when we had the first bid opening. Could. But I can't make any promises right now.
But left the cafeteria like it was, though, as far as the changes that we did, had to do on that?
We're talking about, you know, just doing away, yes, yes, we're still talking about adjacent to the building, because we're sprinkling it.
Right.
He just doesn't believe that sprinkling system being included requires second egress for each classroom. If there's no second egress required, then it won't require the drive, the walk, side walk, the ADA compliance sidewalk.
Correct.
That could be several hours.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Well, I'd say, we did talk to, against counsel only, and I think his advice was according to state law, was the lowest and best bid, was what-
I, I agree with that, but I, I have a little reservation, with, our responsibility is to be the best thing for our community. And I realize what that counsel was, and again, I'm not disagreeing with it, but he's saying, based on locality, you can't pick a certain person. It really isn't based on locality, when I talked about it in that meeting, it's based on, this, this contractor is using local subcontractors, buying material locally, and on a $2 million job, with a $9,000 difference, is that not economically going to better impact our community? Now, if that, if he was in Bollington, it wouldn't matter if he were using local contractors in local supplies and materials. $9,000 on a $2 million job? It is a locality issue, it's a financial economic impact issue.
Yeah.
And that best represents our county by using local people, because that money funnels back into Chester County.
Well, I'm not, I'm not arguing at point, and I'd rather have local too, but I'm just going by what the state law is saying, and I don't feel that-
But that comes under best bid.
That's right.
$9,000 is different. Let's say, for argument, fifteen thousand dollars, and I know it's going to be much different than that, but just fifteen thousand dollars came back to our community by using local subcontractors that these other people aren't using, buying material locally, so it's not the best bid.
No.
It's more money funnel into our county by using local people.
But I believe it's, like I said, the counsel was saying that it's already been-
Now, the counsel said, you cannot, you cannot pick a contractor based on the locality of their business. It's not based on the locality, it's based on community economic impact. It doesn't matter if his business is in Jackson, if he's using local subcontractors, and local, if Barker is using the same people he were, it would be the best bid. But he's not using the local subs as that low, that, that bid.
At ENT. If I may interject, we've already been told too, if we don't use the lowest and best, which would include the price, we will have an audit, we'll have an audit binding with the shirt.
I agree, I want to just make that note. That's my feeling, but however, that can question the term best.
Well, according to what I've been told, the audit, if you have a letter in your, in with your bid-
With the bid.
The, explaining-
Why you went.
Why you went with it, and why you feel it's the best, that's not going to be a problem.
Letter from who?
From, from, from you, I guess, or from the board. I mean, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be from, it'd have to be somebody who had it, but, but would get the deal, I mean. I'm not arguing the point of it would be local, but my point is, we're opening ourselves up possibly to a lawsuit, and the counsel did say, if that has ever been shown, that you weren't going to win, if you could, well, we're hiring them because they're local, and they hired me.
But we're not hiring, if you guys don't have local, we'll be law.
A dollar won't amount to nothing if we get the lawsuit over that.
Absolutely. Oh, I just wanted to make that known, if I, out of pressure from counsel, voting on this, is why I'm not voting the way I truly feel, even though I understand why we're being instructed this. But, but tell me, on a $2 million job, a man using local subcontractors and local material, the county's not going to come out better using that, over $9,000 difference in a bid?
Well, there's more than $9,000 difference in a bid.
Not really.
Well, when you leave out the rock, and the soil removal, and all those uncertain things that aren't-
Well, it's $11,000.
It's about $20,000, $15,000 to $20,000.
But, we've already been told we're going to have to have the rock and-
Yeah, but it's still, no, no, well, it's still, it's more than $9,000.
We don't have the extra walks around the building, we shouldn't have to have that extra dirt work and grass. Only thing I'm saying is, you can say, well, it's not because it's local, but I believe at the meeting before last, we said we'd rather have somebody local, we'd rather hire a local, and I mean-
Because, no, I said, based on who he was using, subcontractors. The argument would have been the same if his office was in Lexington, Jackson, or Bollington. It's who, it's how he's going to apply his work, and where the materials would come from, and where the local subcontractors would be coming from, and that's Chester County.
Well, my feeling is, let's say, you know, everybody can vote how they feel, and if we do go with the, my other being the lowest, and I do feel like we're opening ourselves up for lawsuit, that's, that's what I don't want to see the-
Right, that's why, eventually, I'm, yes, I'm probably going to have to vote that way, but I could not do that good thing without sharing that, because it's just-
And I would say that everybody, everybody wants a local to have it, it's just to help ensure that it's just to come in the lowest bid, and have it made all of this moot, as far as the discussion.
And I just, I'd say, I, I don't want to see us do anything that causes a lawsuit against the board of the county, that being the cost of more money, and could possibly even stop the project. Any discussion?
Well, it was the recommendation from our counsel to go with Barker. That was the longest, that was the recommendation from our counsel.
Reason for that is to be within the law and not risk a lawsuit. Are we ready to vote? Okay, motion is for Barker to get the lowest and best bid, is that correct?
Yes.
For the video?
Yes. Dwight Bingham?
No.
Shane Connor?
Solely based on counsel, yes.
Norris Frank?
Yes.
Ronald Johnson?
No.
Bob Moore?
Yes.
Yes. Glenn Nathan?
Yes.
You have four yes, two no.
Okay, we're going to go to the lowest bid, which is Barker. And as I've said before, I say, I'm not, I don't want you to fight, I have to argue with you, I'm just, I say, I'm doing it legally, this way I'm doing it, and as I've told you all before, nothing-
Well, and I think that should be known, is the situation we were presented with, there was a city that did that, and had to pay twice for a project, and that's the only reason I'm voting, is to save the county from having to do that, but I feel in the long run, it may not even, it may not be the best bid, but you don't want to take that chance with that kind of-
We'll see when you start.
We'll see when they-
Change those.
Yeah, with all those changes you're talking about, who says that's going to be the best bid?
Well, but the same, same thing, if changes come in, and any of them would be charged with more than changes, so that's kind of a good point also. Would you have any other? Well, we did have one change to the calendar, I thought you brought up.
Yes.
Can I give it up?
If you've been paying attention to the Election Commission locally, they've had a, an employee adjustment in their election commission, and Kathy Best contacted me two weeks ago, and this was after our board had approved the agenda, or excuse me, the calendar for that 18, 19 school year. What she raised was the fact that there probably would be a significant turnout on the August 2nd, 2018 election cycle. So, there's a lot of county, local, city positions open, and that's primaries for federal legislatures, and also state legislators and governors. So, and they're also purchasing new voting equipment, so she felt like the numbers would be significantly higher. Again, August the 2nd was included in the calendar as the first full day of school for the students. August the 1st, which is the very first day that any school can start, was going to be our partial day for orientation. August 2nd is going to be the first full day. I polled, after getting this information from Kathy Best, I polled principals, supervisors, and then have extended it out to some of our faculty advisory committees that have worked on this. I think East Chester's already offered some feedback, the high schools offered some feedback. The majority of the feedback offered was, the easiest thing to do would be the best thing to do in this case, which would to treat the August 2nd as a staff development day. It does not add or take away a day from our calendar. Staff development days counts as part of the 180. So, again, for the safety of our kids, and again, think about that, where mamas and daddies are bringing their babies for the first official day, and then you've got all your local people to come in and vote at our three places. We just felt like to keep that safety matter out of question, that we would treat that first day, first full day, as now a staff development day, so they will start on the Friday, that will be August 3rd. So, we will still do a orientation day on August the 1st, but the first official day for the students will be August the 3rd. There's no real change with the calendar, it's just how we categorize that first day.
All right, thank you. Board, anybody else have anything else to be discussed? Do you want, do you want to?
Some, I mean, a spring.
All right, that's true. Frank?
Okay.
Did not know, did not know. I want to hear.
Well, yeah, you won't think today, I mean it.
No, it's fine, I feel good, okay. All right. Then I do want to announce that our next meeting, it'll be February the 22nd, will be our February meeting. Nobody on the board, Katie, anything else? Like, most words are-
Second.
I want to say, ah?
Ah.